Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, and thank you all very much. Appreciate your patience for getting started just a few minutes late this evening, thanks to the miracles of technology. As I like to say, just because it's a smartphone doesn't mean that I'm smart. For the folks at home tonight, if you'd be kind enough to pan to the screen, we can show them what's on the agenda. We have two public hearings. One is for a moratorium waiver application. The second is regarding Local Law C, a proposed C, which is amending that moratorium. And for the agenda items, we'll be discussing the potential for Archtop Fiber to be doing some work alongside the roadways here in town. And we'll tackle Local Law C. We'll continue our discussion about highway equipment purchase options. We'll have some discussion about updating our smoking regulations on publicly owned land, setting a hearing for another waiver application, and then starting the environmental quality review for the proposed Cookingham Solar Project. It is 7:35, so I think, why don't we jump around a little bit, if that's okay, Deanna? For our first public hearing, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing notice, please?
Notice of public hearing, moratorium hardship waivers, Local Law 1 of 2024. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on November 12th, 2024, at the respective time set forth below, or as soon thereafter as the matter comes before the Board, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on the application received on the date set forth below from the applicant set forth below for a hardship waiver of the provisions of Local Law Number 1 of 2024 entitled "A Local Law Placing Moratorium on Applications" in the TND/CC sub-district, on applications for subdivision in the AB district, and on applications affecting wetlands adopted March 27th, 2024. The requests for waiver concern the following. Public hearing time 7:35. Owner and application date, Peter Close and Jean Vautzinas, October 17th, 2024. Property and tax parcel 45 Echo Valley Road, 8.54 acres. Tax parcel 134889627200919892. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed waiver applications are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board at 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated October 23rd, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go for that public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Hold on, favor. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the application? Okay, very good. Just for the record, we do have a memo from our building and zoning. We also have a memo from our engineer regarding the application, and we will be discussing the application later on in the agenda. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's quickly go through and take a look at the supervisor's statement for the folks at home. This is a reminder, the first meeting of the month. It is a snapshot on the finances as of the end of the preceding month. We started, this is now for October 31st, 2024, we started with an opening balance of roughly seven and a half million dollars. And if you want to scroll to the screen, we can show those. Receipts of one and a half, disbursements of nearly 1.7. We have an ending balance of $7,444,000. You have with you some budget adjustments as recommended by our bookkeeper. And you have, as you always do, the monthly variance report. Any questions? As you know, we had our closing this month on one of the Cookingham houses and next month on the next one. So those will change the total figures. If there are no questions, would anybody like to entertain a motion to accept both the supervisor's report and the monthly budget adjustments?
Some route.
Thank you, William. Is there a second? Thank you, Julia. Okay, very good. Also, we have the Town Clerk's report.
The Town Clerk's report for the period of October 1st, 2024 to October 31st, 2024, total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $7,168.92. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $12. Amount paid to the New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $270. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $786.8. Total state, county, and local revenues, $8,237. And I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 32610 to 32699 totaling $384,755.26, processed in the month of October 24, 2024, are inaccurate reporting of the abstracts approved or painted by the Town Board.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report on the abstract?
Some route. Second.
Thank you, Bill. Hold on, favor.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Announcements. Well, we couldn't start announcements without having pancakes. There's a fundraiser or a fire for Javi Strong fundraiser this Saturday, November 16th, 8:00 a.m. to noon. And a wonderful event. I've been to one of these previously. The Elks is having their Veterans Appreciation Luncheon. That is on Sunday at 2:00. Veterans and one guest free. There is a note about the Tree Commission, planting trees in North Park West. One announcement I want to make, folks, if you have been following along, a couple of weeks ago, I declared a state of emergency burn ban here in the Town of Red Hook. That has, as of today, been extended statewide by Governor Hochul. There is no outdoor burning of any kind that is permitted. I'm sure you all have been watching the news and seeing all the wildfires and how they've spread and the loss of life that has occurred in addition to lots of property. So that's statewide. If you're thinking of going somewhere within New York State, just keep that in mind. No outdoor burning of any kind. Okay, we are now at 7:45. May we do our second of public hearing, please? Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read the notice?
Public hearing notice, Local Law C, proposed of 2024, amend Local Law 1, 2024 moratorium on applications in the TND/CC and AB districts and wetlands. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on November 12th, 2024, at 7:45 p.m. local time, at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons regarding a proposed Local Law C of 2024 entitled "A Local Law to amend Local Law 1 of 2024 imposing a moratorium on applications in the TND/CC sub-district, on applications for subdivision in the AB district, and on applications affecting wetlands. To amend said moratorium to authorize consideration but not adoption of final actions subject to the moratorium. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments and writing to the Town Board at Town of Red Hook, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Town Clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated October 23rd, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook."
Thank you very much, Deanna. Just as a reminder for folks at home, earlier this year, the Town Board instituted a moratorium in a couple of areas. The traditional neighborhood commercial district, running up and down nine here, applications, moratorium for a period of time, essentially nine months, so that applicants wouldn't come in while we are trying to form a central sewer district. And we are in a position now where we can amend the moratorium law so that those applications can proceed. There'll be a requirement that they tap into the central sewer when the central sewer is up and running. As far as wetlands, we, with the help of Deputy Supervisor Hamel, identified that New York State was on the verge of changing state regs as they relate to freshwater wetlands. And we didn't want folks to be caught in the middle doing applications under one code, only to find that they wouldn't be approved because a second code was in place. That is coming up January 1st, so we've modified the moratorium so applications can now proceed because they will be subject to the new regulations as of January 1. So that's sort of a quick synopsis of where we are. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing?
Second.
Hold on, favor, Bill?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak on this public hearing? Okay. So we'll note for the record that we do have a referral warrant from Dutchess County, which we've considered as well. We'll leave the public hearing open until we discuss this as an agenda item later this evening. And we can move right on into our first item in the agenda, which is Archtop Fiber. And we have a couple of folks from Archtop here to remind everyone. I think the last time you were here was how long ago?
About a year ago.
Okay, about a year ago. Okay, very good. And so Sean, you want to take it away?
Sure. I'm Sean McCaughan, and my colleague is Tom Weckeser. I live in Reinbeck, although it's going to be news to him, I put in an offer this afternoon on a house in Red Hook. So maybe you're closer neighbors.
Oh, there we go.
But Archtop Fiber, for those of you who don't know, we're a competitive internet provider. We're constructing roughly, it's a roughly a $300 million project, privately funded, building a competitive fiber-to-the-home internet service from Albany, on that side of the river, at Hudson, and all the way down to basically Reinbeck and Hyde Park, and then on the other side of the river, down to Warwick in Orange County, and then also over to the Delaware River. So it's a fairly large, multi-thousand-mile project. They said it's publicly funded. It is predominantly deployed on utility poles, so hence the delay. It has taken us well over a year. There are permits that we've had in place with Central Hudson and National Grid for three or 350 days, even though statutorily they're supposed to be done at 45. They are starting to come in faster now, so hence the activity that you see. Where we have constructed locally, and the service is, the founders are colleagues of mine from, for 30 years, we have built cable and broadband systems all over the world, Montana, Wyoming, a third of Colorado. We built Santiago, Chile, to Tierra del Fuego. We built, we were the first company to get an internet license in an iron curtain country. We built the seven major cities in Poland after the wall fell. So we've been doing this a long time. The Hudson Valley has been a place of passion for me in my career and at this sort of later stage here. But we decided, this was, having sold our last company, we were too young to retire, too old to do anything else, we decided to do it here. We were the first company to, in the redevelopment over at I Park, the old IBM facility that has been abandoned for better part of 35 years. We have moved in. We've just passed 100 employees, predominantly local technicians and engineers and business people. And so we are well on our way. We have built virtually all of the village of Reinbeck. We are well underway in the village of Red Hook, and started in Tivoli. And there are three main types of construction that we do. Mostly aerial, as I said, about 70% to 80%, depending on the quality of the poles and the time it takes to get on them and get the permits. And then the remaining is underground. And there are two different places where we build an underground. In Reinbeck, the mayor, and because of the nature of the streets there, there wasn't a lot of green space between the sidewalks. There was no right-of-way. So we had to dig what's called a micro trenching trench. It's about an inch wide, about 12 inches deep, right on the side of the road, and into the actual asphalt. That is not what we've been doing in Red Hook or Tivoli, although there will be a little bit in Tivoli that we have to do that way because there is no green space that we call it. In the town, and what we have, I brought you some maps to show where we'd like to get started. It's in the green space, and we use a technology called stitch boring or directional drilling. Where are we going? And this is the point where I should shut up and let Tom talk because my mouth will write checks that he's going to have to cash. But we basically dig very small holes and then use a pneumatic missile to get from hole to hole to hole. And we will take a plug out of the ground, put it on a tarp, put the conduit through, and then where we need a termination point, we will put in underground vaults with a green lid on it. And everywhere else, we will pull the plug back in. So it's not like trenching where you can get a depression, because we don't disturb any earth, we just push through. We tend to dig and cover it in the same day, so we are in and out in that neighborhood. And it's a bit like an invasion when we show up, you know, there are a lot of guys digging a lot of holes. So it's a fairly big crew, so we can get in there and out of there very quickly. And I think if you look around Red Hook, we're very, very pleased with how it's coming out. I know Mayor Smythe has been complimentary to us in it. And as I said, we're very local, so if you do have a problem, you have my cell number on my card, it's on the website. I work across the river and I live 10 minutes that way. So we do this under the authority of the state. We have something called a CPCN, or Certificate of Public Conveyance in Need, which allows us access to the rights of way. However, we just don't proceed without, I think Supervisor McKee, you may have been the first meeting we ever had, but sitting at that picnic table when we first conceived of this, it was only three of us and an idea at that time. And we often, we insist upon really developing good relationships with every municipality at every level, from the smallest village, or even non-organized location with a homeowners association or something, all the way up through the state. And we do so by just being very, very active in the neighborhood. We put up Christmas tree lights with our bucket trucks, and we participate in fire department events and library fundraisers. And we've done that for 35 years of my career, and will continue to do it here for a new company where orange trucks were pretty noticeable. And we just would like to get started as soon as possible because the Central Hudson permits have started to come through, and the underground portion of this is necessary to keep all of that together. So we're about to make all of the interconnections. The services that we'll be providing are true next-generation, state-of-the-art fiber-to-the-home, multi-gig. It's what's available in Seattle, it's available in Seoul, South Korea, it's available in some parts of New York City, but it's really not generally available in rural America yet. It's called XGS Pond. Basically, we say it's about 10 times the speed at roughly half the price of our competitors, and it is a dedicated speed. Cable services now provide best efforts, speed technology, where there will be a node, there'll be dozens of homes on that node, so that's why you see things slow down when everybody's watching television in the evenings, but when they're very, very fast at 3:00 in the morning. We provision at a dedicated speed, both up and down. So you will never have buffering, you'll never have tiling. The latency is for whether you're an engineer or a gamer or whatever. So it really is the state-of-the-art technology that, when the FCC encourages people to invest through subsidization, now, as I said, this is all private capital, and our investors are the New York State Pension Fund and Toronto Teachers Union Pension Fund. So it's good long-term operational investment. But our speeds are second to none anywhere in the country, and the prices, as I said, roughly about half the price of our competitors. And that's about what I've come to say. We'd like to, in other municipalities, we have entered into sort of an informal MOU, if you will, which sort of just sets out a set of terms. In some communities, they have asked, and we have agreed to a, particularly in the micro trenching areas where we are going to be disruptive. I think, as we're cutting into the streets, we have agreed to a per foot right-of-way, one-time right-of-way fee, which we have paid to Reinbeck, and we're going to pay to the village of Red Hook. We'd be filing a similar document here. The aerial is, that's on someone else's technology, and that's a state authority, it's a slightly different rubric that we operate under in that regard. But for the underground, and then there are other communities like Sagardis, which didn't ask us for a right-of-way fee at all, it really is entirely up to the community. We don't really have a lot of religion. Obviously, as an owner of the company, I prefer not to pay right-of-fees, but we understand the necessity of having to manage your infrastructure, and we want to pay our fair share. With that, we were pretty anxious to get started. We've got a lot of crews working in the village now, and it is starting to expand out into the town. And it's not just the super-dense areas. We're building out the vast majority of the town. Tom can talk, he's a lifelong, multi-generational guy from the area, about all the individual streets, if you want to. Tom, did I miss anything?
No, I think the maps we provided you today are of the areas we'd like to do that green space stitch bore directional bore, where we're not impeding in the roadways, we're going under the road, going under driveways. Great examples for us would be if you go over to Cambridge Drive, we did all Red Hook Estates in there, to see what it looks like, the finished product from us. I mean, we really have a good track record with that. We completed the village, and the village is all complete, so you can drive around there, and you'll see the boxes we deploy. Only if you're walking, you'll never see it driving by. There are flush mount that get mowed over in the green space. So we chose these five areas to start with, because this is obviously the densest area where we have good green space. And as Sean said, we're not picking and choosing, but these would be the areas we'd like to get started at, and have crews at the ready. As soon as we get the go-ahead, they'll be in there. And we can do it throughout the winter. We'll work around the snow. Obviously, if it snows, we pull back. As Sean said, we'll build. We try to cover up everything we've opened that day, so as to not impede with everyday traffic or affect anybody's lifestyle. The other thing we like to do is work closely with the DPW. What we would do is if we get this permission, we would work with the department, calling them. We can either set up a weekly call. I know with the mayor in Reinbeck, we had weekly calls just till we got rolling, and he felt comfortable that everything was proceeding. He was happy with the crews. That's what we would intend to do, too, is communicate with the crews, so you'd always know where we're at. We also try to, because you're affected by all the dig safes that we put in, because your town, your water people would have to go out and do locates and stuff like that. So we like to coordinate with you guys, as to not overwhelm you, and get your guidance on where to go. So with that, I would just say, I think you'd find, our main goal is to work with you guys, so we're not putting you out.
We tend to be talkers by nature, and we tend to over-communicate. So we door-hang on the communities. In a couple of different areas, I know Tivoli is doing this, and the mayor of Kingston and mayor of Sagardis both, we will provide a pre-designed one-pager to go out in a mayor or supervisor's weekly communication, like, hey, you see a bunch of orange trucks in your neighborhood? This is what's going on, right? And we will put door hangers on, or anything else that you guys would like us to do. We're all yours to try and communicate. The last thing we want to do is generate a torrent of phone calls saying, on social media or whatever, just say, who are these guys? We want to pre-answer that, because, let's face it, we want to make a good impression. We are looking to lure as much of the market away from the incumbents as possible. And you don't do that by offending or irritating people with your crews or with a lack of communication. So we were just at a couple of homeowners' associations, and we will do an event where we set up a table and a tent, saying, this is who we are, this is what your options are, that kind of thing. The service itself is, as I said, technologically, as good as it exists anywhere in the world. We provide a, there is no fee for installation, so the drop, irrespective of how short it, 50 feet, or long at 1,500 feet to a larger property. So there's no cost for installation. There's no cost for equipment. If you, when we put the drop into the home, it's similar to a cable drop that box on the side of the house. We call it a NID, because we got to give everything an acronym in our industry. And then there is essentially a motive. We call it an OLT. It's an optical light termination device on the inside. And then we also provide a managed Wi-Fi radio and an extender. Very few homes around here will need more than that, but we actually put them in the manager, so you won't have to go out and buy your own ERO radios for several hundred dollars in order to serve your home. And it is a very, very advanced, but simple to use, if those two things can coexist, managed Wi-Fi service. So we're just, most people are shocked at how many connected devices that actually exist in your home. You think, okay, my cellphone is on my Wi-Fi, my computer is on my Wi-Fi. But when you think of all of the tablets, your washing machine, your refrigerator, it's amazing, they call it the Internet of Things. It is growing, and it is not unusual for us to see 30 or even 40 devices. This allows the homeowner to manage all of those devices very easily, from his cellphone or from a tablet, anywhere in the world. And all your smart doorbells and door locks and everything that is connected through this. So really good, fast internet with a stable and advanced wireless radio or Wi-Fi radio is essential to that. If you want to get into the demand for our services, or what it means to property values, there's some fairly advanced studies these days that having no internet depresses your property value, having mediocre, regular internet is good, and having fiber actually expands your property values. I actually had a homeowner call and complain that he was upset that his taxes were going to go up because I was going to change his assessment. That was a first for me. But I think the one thing that the pandemic taught us was internet is no longer a luxury. It is what we all need to operate our homes. Any questions you have? We would very much like to get started very quickly.
I have a few questions, actually.
Certainly, sir. Certainly, sir.
Here's one, the map makes sense that you're focusing first on where the developments, where there's the concentration of homes. Were you planning on microtrenching outside those areas in the more rural parts of the town?
This map here, right, is current, is that right, Sean?
It is current. And so it's split between two, aerial is the orange, so this will be up on the utility poles, and then the blue is underground. I don't believe there's any microtrenching contemplated in this. If it has, it would have been in third color, but I'll look into that. And some people are vitally opposed, some highway departments are vitally opposed to microtrenching, and some absolutely love it. We've had both, and it is a tool in our tool chest. It is not all that we do, in fact, it's the least popular and most expensive way that we deploy, but in some areas where there's no green space and there's no access to poles, it really is the only feasible way to do it.
Well, that's where my question is going to come in, we're lucky to have a highway superintendent here tonight. We're a small town, we have a limited budget, you probably know that maintaining highways is not an inexpensive thing to do, and she spends a lot of time planning into the future our roads, which ones get repaved, chip sealed, whatever, and we have to get, we get public money to help us with that, and the one thing, when you start getting into microtrenching and you're actually going into the blacktop, I have a question, I mean, do you warranty that work?
We do.
And for how long? And what's the nature of the warranty?
Well, we would put up a bond.
Right.
If you so choose, I mean, different municipalities have asked for different things. We, I'm not sure that there would ever be a situation where we wouldn't come in and fix it, I think if you were to grade it and hit our stuff, we would go, so it's sort of an odd question, asking like, how long will you stand behind your system? As long as we, as long as I'm on this side of the dirt, that's pretty much what I would say, but from an agreement perspective, we tend to agree to a three or five-year term.
That makes sense.
And then in some larger, more organized communities, they'll actually ask for a bond.
But is that just for where the micro trench went? Okay, because this is where my sort of thinking is going, is there are instances when there are catastrophic failures in roadways, sometimes they're caused by introduction of moisture or other issues that you can't see or know, and should there be a catastrophic failure in a roadway where you did a microtrenching and it requires a significant amount of work to be done to dig it out, refill it, then pave it? Is that something you would cover, or is that something you're only covering the trench and that's on the town?
Well, I think it's important to realize that, I think people look at trenching as what the water department, or what the gas company, or what the electric company does, which is a relatively wide and deep trench. We cut a one-inch-wide, two-fingers width, 18-inch slot into the road, stays into the road monolith, so it doesn't really go below the road. Although in some rural roads, the underpack is relatively shallow, but it was somewhere between eight and 12 inches, we fill it with flowable fill to the top, and then we patch it with a mastik that is very, very common, as you know, the water department, it's a craft co.
It's like a crack seal, but it's a
It's got some medium in it, and yeah, we put a four-inch-wide swath, we tend to like to do it on the fag line, so then when, if you go over to Rhinebeck where we've done it most effectively, we cut the fag line, put the four-inch cap down on top of it, and paint the fresh little fag line down, so it just sort of disappears at that point.
Well, and a couple of these in College Park, you have them going across the roads?
They would be under the road. That's just a high-level design, and we're not
So the micro duct is
This is about microtrenching, so we're taking a little bit off.
No, micro duct is just a small duct that we would put under the road.
There may be instances when you have to go into the blacktop, and if you have to go into the blacktop, and then we're fiduciaries to the town, and if the water department is doing work, they're a public utility, they're funded by us and by the users, you're a private company, you're not really a public utility in the same sense.
Actually, we are, we have a CPCN.
But you don't belong to the town, so our taxes, the taxpayers pay for those services in maintaining the roads. And all my issue is, is that as a fiduciary, I want to make sure that if we're going to allow a private company to cut into our roads, that there's some ability, if there's a catastrophic failure in the road, that it's not going to fall on our taxpayers. That's really what this comes down to for me. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that I'd like to get some further explanation about how far you guys would go in warranting the work.
Well, if I may, what we're doing here is talking about being in the green space, so we're not talking about cutting the road at all tonight.
Right.
If such time that we would require a road cut, we would be held to the same standard that anybody who would approach your highway department, whether it's Central Hudson Gas and Electric or any other entrant into that road bed, we would have to get a permit and pothole and do all of that, and would be held to the same standard as any other state-licensed organization. But we're not asking for that, we're asking for permission to be in the green space on the side of the road.
Right, side.
Or under the road.
So a couple of questions for you, Sean. So you're going to start out with the neighborhoods, makes sense. I guess my question is, when are you going to get to the folks that maybe need it the most in the rural parts?
Soon as Central Hudson gets me my permits.
Okay. And that's our strategy here, is since we have underground crews available, let's get this, and then as the permits come in, we connect everybody together, and this is all out of the way, and that's why we chose to go use this method, we're kind of working simultaneous between waiting for the aerial permits and tie our underground in.
Are there any trucks that have been doing stuff above on the poles?
We have been as well. We label everything.
Right, I thought I saw it.
And to give you a, sort of an understanding of why we would not waste any time or delay any of these outer areas, we have what my CFO likes to call burn rate, it's several million dollars a pay period, and every month that we are delayed waiting for permits, our capital cost to build that goes up by that amount. Believe me when I tell you, it takes us roughly on average two and a half weeks from when we get our permit to complete the build. So we wait 300 days for the permit, and then we're done in two weeks. That is the paradigm that we've been working under, we are sitting in the stocks waiting to take off, and as soon as we get the permit, we go out and build it. It would shock me to my core if there were ever a space where you said, if you saw that we had gotten permitted, we were delaying the deployment, because we want to get up on the poles, we want to sell the service to competitors.
But there's a commitment, so you're committing to building out this map?
This has all been invested and paid for, we have a project plan with the capital and the materials sitting in the yard in Kingston, waiting to be deployed. We have the contractors already signed up, we have unit cost pricing with all of our contractors, and we are dying to get this done. So this isn't, now, there's some stuff south of Rhinebeck that is a little interest to you, but we are looking at that for expansion into the future, but this is a settled investment. We are provisioned, we've actually invested all of the engineering, all of permitting, bought the materials.
But some of this is on private roadways too, if I look closely at it, so you haven't yet, I assume, negotiated with those property owners to come down to their houses yet?
Correct, we do that on a case-by-case basis. So typically what we'll do is build past a private road, taking into account, making sure we have the infrastructure to feed all the houses that are on that road, and then if someone from that road calls us, or say it's a private drive with two or three houses, if one person calls us and says, hey, we want your service, then we say, okay, well, can you give us permission to trench alongside your road? Typically, those roads, you can get into the green space, so that's how we handle it on that, and we can just go ahead and do that, we do it case-by-case.
You are, by virtue of including this in your project plan, you're offering to go with no cost to all these homes?
Yes.
Correct. That's no cost for the deployment of the main line and no cost for the installation either, or the equipment in the home, so it is a simple monthly recurring revenue service. Now, the services we provide, I said, are high-speed internet, and we also, even though it is a waning industry, we provide home phone service as well, and it is not sort of a vapor VoIP service, it is actually, we're a certified exchange carrier in the state, so we provide the same 911 services that Frontier does at a 59s level, which means the network has to be up 99.999% of the time. What we do not provide is a competitive video service to spectrum. We do offer a lot of information on the various streaming services that you can get, and our service is obviously the best position to provide the best experience for those streaming services, but the cable experience of a cable box and a TV sitting on your sofa, that's not something that we have put in the model to do.
These maps then, Sean, sorry, they reflect what you have permits for currently?
They reflect the first tranche of permits that we submitted to your DPW that we are waiting to be given a permit to get started.
Okay, but you have whatever you need from Central Hudson for these neighborhoods?
Those are all underground, so Central Hudson, there's not a
That's not correct.
Right, but some of these neighborhoods, you need to get there, right? You've already done that, you've already come down nine or up nine, rather.
No, this is in preparation, we have all the pole permits submitted, they're in certain elements of the process, so we're going to do the underground with the anticipation of being able to connect that with the aerial as they come. We have hundreds of permits in with Central Hudson, their applications, I should say, and they're going down through those. So these have been out there for quite a while, and we feel they're the next run to come in, so we get this underground put in, it's prepped, it'll have all the fiber and ready to go, as soon as that application comes through, we connect it, and now we're ready.
And I think a way to look at it is, we have experienced, we couldn't understand just how long it takes Central Hudson to get through these permits, so we are timing this underground construction, these permits have been in for 260 days, and we anticipate them, we have estimated completion dates from Central Hudson over the next several weeks, this is what we would like to get done before the end of the year. And so we anticipate by the time we're done with this underground, those aerial permits will be in our hand in that two-week cycle that I mentioned, and we will make those interconnections timed perfectly at the right time. So we're not looking to build this and just let it sit there for six months, the connectivity, we have, it may not be perfect, it may not happen to the day or even the week that we anticipated, but in the short surrounding time that we complete the underground, we expect to have the aerial permits in this one.
Have they made any requirements, additional poles along your route?
Yeah, we've replaced thousands of poles.
Okay.
Yes. Not only have we replaced thousands of poles, we have replaced thousands of poles that they have also gone to their rate case to the state and gotten paid for, we're the rate payers. But apparently that's just okay, and I'm sure Anthony's going to watch this tomorrow and delay my permits.
So give us, now that you've been down this road figuratively and literally, give us some idea of what people can expect, timeline, for the construction and when you go live.
Well, as I said, we tend to bury what we opened that day, so if we're in front of your house in the morning, we'll be gone in the afternoon. And so it's a fairly large crew that moves through a neighborhood, as I said, this is all construction that we hope to finish throughout through the rest of November and early December. I think, I don't think, I know, my investors are saying, I have to have all of this completed by 2026, or we've got the devil to pay, and so we are anticipating with all of the permits that we have in flight already, and all of the underground construction that we are doing, that we will be done, I think, what we're calling the sort of Northern Duchess area. We also acquired the Germantown Telephone Company, and they've completely rebuilt that. The Warwick Valley Telephone Company, we spent roughly $20 million taking all of that old copper and deploying new fiber there. We anticipate being done with the Northern Duchess build, Tom, help me out here to not lie to these people, so roughly six months into 2026 for this area?
Yes.
Yeah, so the first
We should be well
The first customer will go live at that point?
No, no, we will be turning customers up, he is saying when we're totally done.
When you're all finished, so for example, when will the Red Hook Village customers go live?
As soon as we get interconnection, and we anticipate that, if the first light piece comes through, it could be in a matter of weeks. The hub site that we built is in Rhinebeck, and it is fully live, we're signing up customers in Rhinebeck as we speak, and this is weeks away, certainly before the end of the year. And as soon as that interconnection happens, and if we complete all of this, all of the people that you have on those maps will have service before the new year, is the anticipated schedule.
That depends
Now, as I said, we write checks with this map, that this guy has to catch.
I was going to say, promos from us, certainly permits from
Yeah, it all depends on when we can actually get started to dig. I'll give you an example, we would start, say, in College Park, we all know the size of College Park, that would take our crews roughly, good weather, no snow stopping us, rain, they would go in there, and probably two and a half to three weeks, it would be all placed, all the fiber pulled through, because what happens is you're going to see the crews come through first, they do all the big digs, getting the conduit in place, then we have a placing crew that comes behind them, they're the ones that have to pull the fiber into the conduit we just placed, and then the last piece of that, you'll see our splicers come in, they're typically in vans, they'll set up at the handholds, and they'll do the splicing. But that turnaround with placing and installation and placing of the fiber, I would anticipate the size of College Park, two and a half to three weeks. So just to kind of give you an idea, and then we would roll on to the next one. That fiber would be all spliced, ready to go out in front of everybody's houses, we don't go into anybody's houses, it's just to make sure that every house has the option to order our services. Then we would move on to the next, we'd leave the tail out on, say, for College Park, we would leave it out on Kelly Road, where we would pick up the aerial piece of it. We'd move on to the next, Linden Avenue, and work our way through there. So that's how we would really like to do it, we would just keep our crews bouncing from one to the next, and then we have separate crews that do the aerial, so as the pole permits come through, we would have the aerial crews coming to meet them that way. So that's how we have it laid out, and it's the way it's been working up till now, for our timing. And as Sean said, we own G-Tel, so an interesting fact is we are already about ready to release services to some of your northern Red Hook people on Lasher Road and West Curly Corners Road. We're finishing the splicing on that, and that was part of our G-Tel obligations, I think, when we purchased G-Tel, so we're able to do that. So we can also capitalize on feeding from Germantown or Rhinebeck, whatever gets us there first, it gives us some options, but that'll be our first town of Red Hook customers. I believe Lasher and West Curly falls under your jurisdiction.
West Curly does portions of Lasher, though.
Yeah, okay, on the neither side, we would be coming in off of it, but we're excited to be able to do that, that's our first agile from Germantown.
So Teresa has a question, but before we go to Teresa, just so I'm clear on this, you're going to be going alongside the roadway, you're going to create a stub at each household, is that what?
No, just an access point, not necessarily at each household, we try to place the boxes on the edges of the property lines to where we can get the most bang for our bucks. Actually, we don't want to place any more boxes than we have to, so we strategically place them so that we can feed as many houses from one location. And then typically, that'll be on one side of the road, and then where we do our road crossings, we put what's called a flower pot, it'll be a round lid instead of a rectangle lid, and that just will then give us the option to bear And that just will then give us the option to bury the drops to the customer's house. It goes into that box with a pathway under the road over to where the main splice is. So that's how we do that. So that's where you'll see when we're on opposite sides of the road.
It's important to know that everything's underground. There are, you know, the pedestals that you see for cable or phone, those big green, somewhat ugly pedestals. All our stuff is at ground level and below, so you can mow across it. And apparently, more techs often can't find the 10-inch round handholds because they get buried with grass and things. So they tends to be aesthetically, you know, very easy on the eyes. It's almost like we were never there when we constructed. And as Tom said, I think there's sort of three functions that we look at when designing and placing. Obviously, safety first, calling it a dig safe and the locates, making sure that we don't hit anybody else's facilities, whether it's gas, electric, or water. Functionally, we wanna make sure it serves as much of the neighborhood as efficiently as possible. And then the third, and no less important, is just aesthetically, we like to make sure that you just, you can't see us. And I think we do that, I think, for a couple of reasons, we're good at it. And, but second, it's that first impression on the neighborhood, which is all important to our penetration rates. And if we create a bunch of ugly things in the neighborhood, you're not likely to win the hearts and minds of your potential customers. So it's very important to us, but we thrive in a critical environment. If you see something that we are doing that you know your markets and your streets are certainly better than we ever will. And if you have a suggestion as to a requirement that we're not placing something somewhere where you just want it six feet over this way or on the other side of the street, we are very receptive to that because we find it makes for a better work product.
And we provide our contact information to every house that's on that neighborhood that we're building on. That way, say, a box goes in and it rains heavy and it settles wrong, you know, occasionally something will happen. They're able to call us back. We send the crews out immediately to reset that. You know, if there's any question or concern that they've had, we've had to go out and, you know, throw with this trout, you know, some of the seeding we had to do. We were actually watering places. We had to hydro seed to try to get, you know, so, you know, our goal and his mission to us is to do this, to leave it as good as, if not better than, how we found it. And, you know, if it isn't, we go back until we get it fixed the right way, and that's our commitment.
So I will agree with you, you guys are talkers. Let's allow Teresa her question if she can.
So when we were doing the design for this, we had an overwhelming amount of dig requests. Is that gonna be the same when you're going into the build? You're doing three neighborhoods at once?
We would do it one at a time, will you? And that's why, I don't know if you were here when I was saying, we would like to work with you and give you a heads up and say, hey, this is where we're going. And, you know, work within your schedule. You know, obviously, we wanna try to get as many in as we can, but we realize this is a unique build. You're used to getting a dig safe for somebody that needs to cross the road, you know, and not an entire, you know, town at once. So we will work with you to try to make sure that that works with your scheduling.
Yeah, because we had both, the water department has to answer the dig requests, the highway department has to answer the dig requests. And it was a little bit overwhelming when we had to do all of them at the same time.
Sure, okay.
I think for us, we would try and communicate with you, figure out what the capacity that you have. How quickly do you want them? And we would feather them in to your department at the rate that you can accept them. The last thing we want is to overwhelm you because it doesn't do us any good either.
And for the tenant board, the town has a utility permit in place, an application. There could be a blanket application, but it would be something that Brandy would have to help develop for this. We have very few utility permits that are of this scope. So Brandy and Chris Shaw had helped in the past when we had larger projects or spent life projects. So in terms of a turnaround, the highway department is going to need help from the town engineer and the town attorney to develop this permit to cover everything that you wanna cover. Because once these utilities are in, even on the side of the road, we're gonna wanna know where they are, and that's what the mapping is.
We actually, we put a tonable conduit in.
Yep.
So we're actually very, very easy to mark in the future.
Yeah, so when you're talking about time and turnaround, that utility permit is a key piece of it because it has to be developed with Brandy and with Chris Shaw. It just doesn't come under my jurisdiction.
And what type of map are you giving us once your installation is in place?
We're all fully developed GIS service, so we can output a map in whatever format. Your map, I'm sure you use RTIS or something along those lines.
So you would do a layer?
Yes.
And do you have an asphalt? I mean, you know, I know that, you know, you have it on both sides of the road, and so you're crossing in multiple places, and maybe you have to adjust in the field. And so do you have that in the asphalt now?
Yep, they would get the final, so we would submit what we anticipate. But a lot of times, that does change because you'll do the locates, and you'll be like, Tom, there's a water name here, we can't do this, we have to shift. So then we would do the asphalt, and that would be the final that we would provide you as the overall design as it, you know, as it is built.
We use an advanced construction management platform called Render, which actually automatically, any change that you do to the design happens organically within the platform. So the asphalt's just happen in real time. We don't have to break into an old design, redo it, put it back together. So it's really efficient for us to get you the asphalt in a timely manner.
Okay.
And, you know, if we need to help assist with Brandy, if they need specific information, just let us know.
Yeah, well, this is the, you know, we started with the utility permit, but it really needs to start with the agreement. So if and when you get the agreement, then we have to go back to the utility permit. After you get the utility permit, then you'll be able to start your work. So it's just kind of shifting around.
Whatever we can do to assist is, you know, let us know.
So as part of the proposed agreement, when I look at the other agreements you got with Tively, rather than Rhinebeck, you'll make sure to bring service to the municipal properties?
Yeah, we're actually pretty proud of that. Everywhere we have gone, we have been chosen as a service provider to all the municipal offices, including fire departments, 911 facilities, and everything. So, yeah, we consider that not just good business, but a feather in our cap that we immediately get picked as the, you know, getting an April moderate. The municipality helps with our presence in the neighborhood. So, yes.
And you're doing that with some sort of discount to us? Because one of the, you know, there's a lot of benefits for the residents who are not served with the level of service that they need. But one of the downsides is we receive franchise revenues, as you know. And so anytime somebody says, oh, let's go with Hartschtop, and they cut the cord with Charter, there's an impact to our budget.
Yeah, under Title VI, and I was at the Commerce Committee when that act was written. Title VI, it's, you're getting up to 5% of the video franchise, of the video revenue under the franchise. So the internet services that Charter or Spectrum, you actually don't get. So them losing an internet customer, now unfortunately, they often tend to lose their video customer at the same time. And that's the de facto impact. What I would like to offer, what we offered in Woodstock and in others is, at Tively, if there is a town park or in Woodstock, in the public area of the Woodstock Town Hall, we offer a free Wi-Fi connection so the community can enjoy. That, we'd love to do that in a town of Red Hook if you have a certain park that you're developing. I know in the case that we're gonna do it at the Sojourn True Truth Zoo Park. We'd love to do that here, it's just part of what we do in the communities.
Yeah. Well, we have a couple of parks in town.
I could probably be convinced to do a couple of parks.
We could discuss that. Okay, well, let's discuss timeframe because, I mean, we do have to get on with other agenda items. So we would normally have our next meeting where we would consider this agreement on the 27th, which is the night before Thanksgiving. We're now looking at doing our meeting perhaps a week earlier on the 20th. I think at that point, we could probably get all our questions answered. And, you know, we could have some discussions about locations where you can provide service. I think, you know, for me, I can't speak for the rest of the board. What I'd like to understand is what type of guarantee you'll have that every one of our residents who are depicted, their homes are depicted, that they will in fact get service, and within what timeframe. You know, we recognize that you have, you know, permits that you'll be waiting for. But what I wanna ensure is that we don't have a community where we have more haves than have nots situations created. So I think that's the language I would be looking forward to add to this agreement for our...
I'd be interested in, you know, if you have your attorney come up with something, I think. You know, where a, the regulatory structure for internet companies is such that we, you know, we have a light-touch federal rubric that is then transferred down to the state. So local municipalities just don't have the authority to regulate what's called an informational service. So sometimes these agreements start to walk and talk like a regulatory construct, and our attorneys blanch at that, you know, that, the downstream effects of agreeing to that. I don't wanna sound difficult. I am standing here today saying, I can make you a personal commitment to someone who's been doing this for 30 years, that everybody on that map we intend to serve. And the only way we wouldn't is if there was an impediment that I am sure you would agree blocks us. A bridge is out, and we can't get to it, or permits are... Yeah, I'm not sure what it could possibly be, but we invested the money in this neighborhood to serve the entire neighborhood. There are other companies that do a success-based model where they only build out to where they've gotten enough orders. That's not our model. We've raised the money to finish this, we have it in hand. And the only thing holding us up is access to it. So anywhere from my personal commitment to something just short of a regulatory, but I am open to hearing.
We'll find a way to spread the needle on that, sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
It's just, there's maybe semantics. So microtrenching, just so I'm clear, because I'm just looking at the agreement, you know, the draft agreement. And then there's some discussion in here about the servants of pavement and paved ways. I just wanna make sure that there's a differentiation between, you know, like I saw you guys on Firehouse Lane, right on the side of the road, you know, doing... If that's microtrenching, then maybe there should be some other verbiage to talk about if you have to break through Hartschtop.
Yeah, and we did not do any microtrenching. So no microtrenching at all happened in the Red Hook, in the Village of Red Hook.
Okay, no, I'm just looking at the agreement.
Sure.
And the verbiage of the agreement. And the verbiage of the agreement is micro trench R-W agreement. So I guess my question is, you know, which is which?
Yeah, and I think if you were to see one over the other, it would be really easy to determine if microtrenching is on stick.
No, I get that, you just wanna... No, I get that, it's this, gotcha.
And I'm open to any edits that you...
Good, and meanwhile, we could also work on the utility permit between now and next meeting and see if we get that in place so that you can keep on moving. Okay, anything else, Jacob?
As you tell, we talked about this stuff all night long, so I'm glad you came.
You came close.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we're back to amending Local Law C. Almost very simply for a nutshell, what it says is that application, the moratorium will no longer impact proposed projects in the TNDCC now that we're well on our way to creating that central sewer. The obvious reason was that we couldn't have applications for individual septics that dominate that area. Otherwise, there would be insufficient demand for central sewer extension down to Route 9. DEC wetlands, applications can proceed, they cannot receive final approval, however, until the new year, when the new regulations go into effect. And then at our next meeting, I anticipate we'll have a draft proposal for modifications to development in the Agricultural Business District. As we mentioned earlier, we have had a rather groundbreaking, successful Cookingham Farm project that is doing many public purposes. It is only possible because we acquired outright all of the properties there, including residential homes. It's not the desired mechanism for how to begin base projects. We are prepared to do that. For example, the key farm, Greg Farm, for example, where it come up for sale, you can be confident that this board will do what it takes to protect that farm. But it's not a method that we wanna employ each and every time a farm comes up for sale. And so we wanna look at the density, and we spoke about this previously. We wanna look at the allowed density on agricultural business district properties. We've given a lot of accessory uses to help those businesses sustain themselves during good times and bad. Speaking of bad, it's been a drought like no other, but great weather for agritourism. So we'll be entertaining, you know, proposals and discussing how to ensure that any limited development on those farms does not in fact injure them to the point where they cannot have a continuing future. So what Local Law C does is allow applications to be considered with AVD, but they also cannot be approved for subdivision. Public hearing is still open. I did reference the referral form from County Planning. It's a matter of local concern. At this time, I think we're, unless we have any more to discuss, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please. Thank you, Jacob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
We have Resolution Number 107, authorizing the adoption by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook of Local Law C proposed, which would now be Local Law 3 of 2024, regarding amendment of moratorium. The proposed law is modifying the law that we adopted earlier this year. Public hearing was posted in our paper of record, the Kipsey Journal. It's been referred to County Planning, subject to a secret type 2 action we've determined. And we hereby adopt Local Law C proposed, now Local Law 3. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Julia, thank you. Okay, very good. We are back to talking about chipper and forklift. Teresa, thank you for rescinding, it's been that long time, rescinding information about the chipper and the forklift. So can you just tell us what the status of your recommendation is on both of those before we go ahead and approve the purchases or entertain a court hold?
Well, I have recommended the propane forklift. It's more appropriate for the highway operations. And the chipper is what we can get.
All right, and it's the outdoor weather that makes us wanna do a propane one versus an electric one? Because I know that they have been in use for many years, electric forklifts.
I think I provided you with a couple of reasons?
Yeah.
So you have that in front of you?
We do.
Okay. The other thing I was also researching, which I haven't been able to get an answer, was the insurance for storing an electric forklift in the building. If we have the appropriate fire suppression systems in place, we do not have a sprinkler. There have been concerns recently about charging and batteries and storing things inside. So I haven't gotten an answer on that.
Yeah.
But I figured I'd do my due diligence and bring you that information.
Yeah.
And budgetary restrictions being what they are, it's half the price.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. The battery safety thing is not, not in my opinion, anyway, a real, a real issue. I mean, electric forklifts, we've been using them in the cold storage building I have. It's been used for years and not an issue. Okay, thoughts, Jacob?
I think that I appreciate the, you know, the feedback and I think it's always good to keep asking about, you know, where the technology is if it's appropriate, so I appreciate, you know.
Yeah, I have no problem at all. I'm on board with it.
It's not there yet?
Yeah, it's just not there yet in certain circumstances.
William?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution number 108 authorizing contract for purchase of chipper and forklift. And it's a piggyback for the folks at home. We go out to bed, public bid on all purchases. Unless there is another municipality that has, that meets our requirement, we can quote unquote piggyback on that. And so that is what is included in this resolution is an acknowledgement that it's a piggyback contract. Source well and resolution number 108 for the chipper and the forklift. I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Teresa.
Thanks, Teresa.
All right. We are moving right along. We are at the point where we are looking at that waiver application. Yes, I'm skipping over that. Sorry. We'll get back to that in a minute. We can dispense with the waiver application. So a little bit of history on this project. This required a special use permit, which went from the planning board in 2021. There was no requirement to have the wetlands delineated because it's at 292 feet from the D E C wetlands. Received approval in 2021, they're just into their building permit. And so my question is, given that the D E C regs now say, the new regs will say that if you've already received a permit, approval from your municipality, that you will be essentially grandfathered in on this. And I see we have communication from our engineer on that recommending getting a new delineation done.
How old was the delineation?
Well, we don't know. See, that's the whole point, that delineation wasn't required because it was well outside of.
And it would still be well outside of what's the new regulations unless it's determined to be a, the wetland is a nutrient pool. Or unless it's 800 feet, unless there's a river pool. But even if there is a river pool, it has to meet the definition that supports various kinds of very specific aquatic life.
Well, if you see the map, I mean, what's closest is actually, I think, an ornamental pond, right? And I think that's the closest thing to the, and that's.
Yeah, but it's not far from the socket.
What's that?
It's not far from the creek.
No, it's not. It's not far from the creek. But it is over 100 feet.
I mean, we have issued other waivers where delineation was a requirement of the waiver, including, I think, for ones in subdivisions that had already had some level of permitting completed.
Well, here's the thing. If you waited, D E C would still require delineation. They'd come in and do it themselves if it was within that distance. If, under the new regs, if you were going to apply for something, although this seems to be far enough outside that they wouldn't have required the delineation.
Well, this project has been under construction for many months now. I know I'm a little bit confused. I think it's the little pool house or something.
Yeah, it's just, it's that pool house and it's almost 300 feet away from the pond. Or, yeah, it's a pool house. There's a pool there, right?
Yeah.
It's in the plan. I don't know if it's there now.
Yeah, they've dug it.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Oh, it's already.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's completed, but they live here.
Yeah, it's in the installation, so.
All right, well, we, so are you, are you saying you're happy with the resolution approving it with the condition they get it delineated? Or at least check with D E C to make sure that it doesn't require a permit?
That's what, that's what I would.
And then D E C is going to tell them they're going to need to get it delineated.
It never hurts to have a delineation done.
Yeah, I was fine with the wording I proposed in the resolution. I thought it was notable and maybe it just was the pro style of our engineer on this particular day, but most of these memos from the engineer have said that, you know, Time Bond has no objections to issuing the waiver on such and such conditions. And in this one, I felt like the light was a little bit stronger than that, that they, there was a recommendation to wait until the delineation was done before considering a waiver. So I just, that was the.
This is 109 authorizing the project waiver, Local Law One of 2024. Who would like to note this? Who would like to second this?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. All right, all in favor, Julia?
Aye.
And myself. That's 109. Next we've got to do, so folks, let's stop for a second and just talk about our meeting, the 20th. I think we'll hopefully have a forum for that, yeah? I think anybody wants to do the night before Thanksgiving? Yeah? Jacob, you sure?
Won't be, won't be here.
Oh, he won't be. Okay, so let's make a motion to reschedule the November 27th meeting to November 20th. Deanna, will either you or Alex be able to make that date?
I can.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's do that because we need to set a public hearing for, so a motion to reschedule. I moved, seconded by.
Jacob.
Jacob. You have to say something. It can't be, it can't be a nod.
I was waiting for you to.
Deanna's good, but she can't hear a nod.
I'm waiting for you to remember my name.
Yeah. All right. All in favor, Julia, William, fine. Resolution 110 is to establish a date for a public hearing on this new application for waiver. And it is from Doug Strickland's page. About that application. So this would be November 20th. Why don't we set 7:35? Oh, no, sorry, December 10th. Yeah, December 10th. Thank you.
No, Mr. Supervisor?
Yeah.
Robert?
Yeah.
Robert, I don't think you have time for publication.
Yes, December 10th. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
We got it. December 10th at 7:35, shall we? You were not imagining things. There was a voice coming out of my laptop. That's the attorney to the town. So December 10th, 7:35. Is it the public hearing? All right, all in favor? Aye, 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 yeah, yeah.
Second.
Julia?
Aye.
That's 110, 7:35. 1210. Okay, we're going to come back to, we will talk about smoking, I promise you. It's very important now especially. So let's, let's just jump to Cookingham Solar for folks at home. Just a quick reminder, we have received and been approved for Clean Energy Communities' grant money. A total of $275,000 in grant money will help to build out the interconnection, which will go from pole to pole. Speaking of which, Cookingham West, I'd like to show you a map. I think we've got a map here. Okay, folks. We've got a couple of maps. This one is 1955. And what you see there where it says project site on the west side is what in essence was a mine. The soil and gravel were mined from this area. And it's not suitable for agriculture, really. It doesn't possess the soils of state wide importance or prime soils that it might have at one point in time. You can see from here that there was an orchard. Folks at home, much of the Town of Red Hook at some point is an orchard. And this is, this clearly shows you, and you can, you can go back in time through Farm and Home Center. But certainly if you go on parcel access, you can get a series of maps. It'll show you what your property looked like back in the day, if you will. So the arrow points to the area that was mined in essence, and this is where the solar is going. It's a lot lower than the surrounding area, so visually the impact will be minimized. You see here, well, it's very hard to show you the whole thing, but this is now the new trail, comes around here. Follow my cursor outside of the screen, if you would, and then goes along here until it gets to its mill road ends it. So the solar will be approximately two acres, but it may be spread over an area that could be as much as four acres. So we're calling it a four acre area here just to give flexibility to the layout and design. Because when we go out for the R F P, we're going to have solar developers propose to us their best layout design within this area here, within this area to work with. Okay, look at the contours. So it sits down. They'll understand that that's our goal. What we are doing now is establishing the date for a public hearing and classifying the action. We believe the Town Board shall be the determining entity, agency on this project. We understand and have been working with this project. And so we are going to consider a Monroe proceeding, which essentially means that the Town Board will be responsible for the review of this project and approval of this profit. And so we have to, beforehand, we have to weigh considerations in order to make that determination. So we're going to set a public hearing on that. First, we have a resolution classifying action and establishing lead agency. That's resolution 111. You have your Part One V A F draft. So this will also be for December 10th. May we do 7:45 PM for this? Well, we're going to circulate this. Do you have any questions about the Part One before we go ahead and entertain our other resolution?
Will the solar field be visible from the trail?
Yeah, it'll be visible from the portion that I think I just, once you, once you round past the barn here, it will be visible. Yeah. Yeah, that's also fairly low lying areas there.
But it will be fenced. So it's kind of like in the middle of the big square? That the trail goes around?
It's virtually.
It's where, where, where it goes windy, where it starts to go windy, where, where it departs.
It's like the bottom portion of it, sort of near the pond that's down there?
Okay.
But like on the, obviously like the, the farm side of the pond.
The water treatment plant is over here, Teresa, if you can see my cursor, I don't know if I'm making that up. Water treatment plant is here and you know it breaks. That's where it will, it continues. Okay, so barn, water treatment, path, solar. So once you round the barn a little ways, you look right, you'll see it in here.
Thanks.
Okay. Any questions about the Part One? Let's, let's go through it quickly if we could. Describing the project. We called out four acres at 11.16 as being the generalized area. We believe that the panels themselves will take up less area than that, but depending upon how they're laid out, it could be as much as four acres. Government approvals or approval? Talks about the municipal plans, zoning. Zoning change is not needed, proposed development, we call out four acres. Question of whether it's disturbed or not. We don't think that the land needs to be disturbed, but we'll, for the sake of discussion, prefer those four acres as disturbed to be on the safe side, you know, that'll sit on coasts. For the folks at home, this would be the second, once constructed, be the second community solar project. And you've heard me talk many times about the success of the first one and how much folks are saving. In fact, over the last couple of years, your average resident who subscribe to the community solar farm is saving more money than they're paying in their annual town tax. Not to say that this will be the current energy pricing, that it will be that attractive to. to join this, we'll find out what the metrics are, but it certainly helps that we obtained Clean Energy Community grant monies to make the project more affordable, and obviously the IRA, which I guess should concern us maybe at this point, you better get this thing built as quickly as possible. The IRA allows us to own it outright in the beginning, because we don't have to worry about depreciating tax credits. All right, moving through Part 1.
Robert, can I take us back for just a second with a question about the, the design and potentially the IRA impacted? It's just a question I have gotten from people in the communities, whether the town would consider an agrivoltaic design proposal for this area. I recognize there are trade-offs in that consideration. So I know we list the proposed height of the panels here, I don't know whether an agrivoltaic setup would take more space. So is that something we would be open to when we put this out to bid, or what are we thinking?
Well, if you can't grow anything, if, if we mined all, if all the soil, agricultural soils had been mined out of there, there's nothing to grow, so why?
Sure, but you could do a pollinator oriented solution, something like that, grazing perhaps.
Well, yeah, I mean, as somebody who stands next to a general farmer, yes, you could, and that's why we have four acres allocated, because the layout may be different, you would want more room in between the rows. But that also can impact the pricing of the project. A lot of times, an agrivoltaic is, is new, so they're really...
Not as new as it once was, that's true.
Well, it's pretty new, I mean, if you go and you look around, there are very few examples, and they're actually learning their way, great, great concept. I mean, in a way, this is agrivoltaic. The voltaiics are right next to the area, okay?
I agree, that's what I figured you were gonna say. I was asking if we're leaving the door open to that consideration in the road, with the way that this is drafted right now.
That's why we have four acres. Okay, so that if somebody wants to propose something like that, you know, we were looking at sheep, not goats, you're looking at berries, I'm not sure there's enough soil in the market. But be interested in seeing what, you know, people come up with.
And if hypothetically, we got a proposal that we were excited about, do we, I'm, I don't know whether the height delineation for the panels that's in here would be, because I think those are frequently more elevated than the standard panel.
Well, they can be more elevated, and they can actually be the articulated ones, right? Which is, you know, has pluses and minuses, you know, like with everything and like...
Moving parts, right?
More parts and, and more problems, so, you know, we would have to weigh, our code says 12 feet, that's it.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Our code says 12 feet.
Okay, I just think it's an interesting conversation. I'm aware that it's an evolving field, I've been getting questions, I just wanted to make sure we didn't box ourselves out of having a conversation.
Well, I've heard about agriv, I now refer to it as aggravated voltaiic, because I've heard about it so much. But yes, it'd be wonderful for us to have a demonstration project of that, and things like sheep, you couldn't have goats, as somebody who has had goats for many, many years, they've been too, they've caused too many problems.
Too lively.
Yeah.
I see no reason why you wouldn't do a pollinator anywhere, though, I mean, I don't know, if you have 12 feet, there should be enough, there are all kinds of, there should be enough ambient light that comes in, why wouldn't one want to consider a pollinator there? I would, and I don't think you need every, I don't think you need those fancy, fancy solar panels that move and do those things in order to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's worth it.
Just a flower guy, it sounds like.
Gotta keep the bees happy.
Keep the bees happy.
Those bees, those bees, but I don't know, how many bees do we want while we're walking on the trails? Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
So, yeah, no, that's exactly why you've, you've got four feet, is so that we can get a wide variety of proposals and we can take those. We will have to look at the proximity to the, you know, the water on that, right, if we were to have livestock and all that, right? Okay, runoff, obviously not, not an issue. Panels, because they're spaced. Owners, land uses around the site, so we're, we're, right now in the draft, there's really no change in the land, because it's not proposed for any construction activities associated with that. You know, we could, could maybe document that there will need to be according to codes of fencing around that, that's required by the electrical code. Natural resources on or near the project site, we recognize that it is, well, it's not in our agricultural district 20, it is at least adjacent, we don't believe it's in agricultural district 20, because of the subdivision, you know, recent subdivision, it is certainly adjacent to it, so we're recognizing that. It is also not too far from a historic building, that's the Hendrick Martin House, circa
12... 13?
39, maybe?
So.
So, being scientific once again, well, okay. Any questions about this? Okay, so this, I think we can safely say this would be a, we've reviewed the thresholds, and we believe this be an unlisted action. We're gonna declare ourselves as lead agency for review of this, shall we, with Resolution 111. An isimoo. Is there a second, Julia? I knew you'd want a second.
I'm gonna do it anyway.
You're gonna do it, okay. All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now setting the public hearing for December 10. Regarding the solar project. And potential Monroe. What time shall we make it, 7? Did we say 7:45, were we gonna do that, Deanna? Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, right.
7:45, December 10.
Great, okay. Resolution 112, and isimoo, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, William. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's, let's do discussion updating smoking regulations on publicly owned land, so the attorney to the town and I were discussing the fact that with our trails, we need to have, and, and any other publicly owned properties, let's think about St. Harvest, let's think about Great Church Cemetery. You know, we already have adopted smoking regulations as they pertain to direct park, but on the trails in particular, and lo and behold, what happens, we end up with a brush fire that may or may not have started on the trail, but certainly was very close to it, if not, it was on the adjoining neighbor's property, it apparently consumed over an acre. You all probably saw the smoke, not to be confused with the smoke that we all encountered on Sunday. The fire was put out by both companies, Red Hook and Tivoli, and then it actually reignited again on Saturday, and then go back out and put some hot spots. All this to say that we, I think, wanna make sure that we ensure that we've got the proper or desirable regulations as it relates to all our public properties, and the current federal regulations don't cover what we might want to cover.
So I had a question about that, maybe for the attorney, I, I was doing a little bit of research when I saw this on the agenda, and it looks as though there is a New York State regulation as of 2022 that would cover parkland, but that maybe there is some ambiguity in the definition that it does cover, and so I just wanted to know what the recommend, is, is there any reason for the town to not also state that?
Well, parklands and trails, now, don't forget, a trail isn't a parkland, so a public access area, like we have through the farm, isn't a parkland, so you'd wanna have...
Correct.
Separate, separate property. Chris, did you, did you want to chime in?
I think that, I haven't made a study of this, Julia, but I think there is some public health law that does prohibit it in, in certain playgrounds and parks, but I don't think that it's pervasively applicable to other town properties, so I think the question is whether you want to, you know, expand the areas where you would, you know, regulate that. And I, and I think that, I would note also that Dutchess County has a, and I think that overlaps the state, certain types of outdoor enclosed areas, so for arenas and that sort of thing, there's a Dutchess County law that applies, so we have several overlapping laws, which is not great, but I think this is a question of sort of taking your park regulations and deciding if you wanna cover additional red hook, you know, owned facilities, basically.
And what about the point that I think Robert was just getting at about places where we don't own the underlying fee land, but do you have town credits, is that, do we have any jurisdiction there?
Well, I think you have jurisdiction with respect to your use of those facilities, and the public's use of those facilities, that you've, you know, just like with your parks, you know? I think that if you want to exercise regulation, you can do that with respect to the use of those areas. I mean, there are, if, if you have an easement area, which, you know, that's not necessarily the case on the, on the grounds that you have, but if you have an easement area, there may be a reservation of rights to the underlying owner, right? But that's not the same as the public that's using them under your offices.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and changes in the last couple of years, cannabis, so while we have seen the use of tobacco maybe decline over the last decade or two, now that it is legal to be smoking cannabis, that, that also could be, you know, a noxious to some people, and certainly a safety issue when it comes to drought circumstances like this. Vaping, I think we need to update, because of vaping, perhaps if we wanna tackle that.
Well, and maybe in some cases, I, I think that the state code does get it to some of these definitional questions, if cannabis is covered under their definition of smoking and identity vaping is additional language or not, but maybe we can align our definitions with the county or the state or both. I wish, it would be nice if Christine were here, I'm curious, obviously this is gonna be difficult to enforce, you know, we don't have people out patrolling the South Hill Trails every day.
Yet.
Yet. So I would be curious to hear the rec departments' take on putting rules in place that are hard to follow through on, but...
Well...
We do have cameras in the rec park.
Sure, I mean, if, if we went off of concerns about could we enforce something all of the time, or some of the time, I guess that we, we probably wouldn't have any rules or regulations, right? I mean, that's, but it's, it's a public health issue, and I'm certainly a safety issue in times like now. I don't think people, you know, go for a walk on the trails to, to, to be behind somebody smoking either a cigarette or cannabis.
No, I, I agree with you, but, well, I'm just, yeah, yeah. Sort of the administration of it.
Yeah, well, let's start with, you know, do we have consensus that we'd like to forbid smoking of all types on our, on our public lands?
I think it's prudent.
Yeah.
Like, period, be it all public lands, any, anything town, one for a town.
Well, yeah, I, I, I think, right? I mean, I think it certainly, you know, if, if folks want to indulge, you know, that's, that's their call, but I, you know, it's one of those things that it's hard to separate the smoke from those breathing. Shall we, should we come, come, come up to rules, Jacob?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I think it's a good idea to consider doing it for, for public spaces.
Okay.
Put it online.
Okay. Okay, so Chris, we could maybe work on something for the next meeting or two?
Sure.
Okay. All right. I think we are finished with the agenda items for tonight, that's the good news, the bad news is that the board is not yet finished. We need to go into executive session to discuss a matter, a real estate matter under negotiation. And with that, good, Julia, good evening, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Can I ask my question?
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Okay, but also I want to make a comment, because...
Yeah, well, come up front first, please, so just for the minute, I know your name, but not everybody does, yeah.
On that 195 Linden Avenue. And I'd like to come to these once every decade to see what's going on. But so, being that we're gonna have the dispensary opening eventually one day, I understand, right, by stewards, I think that's a very good idea to have a public smoking ban, because you have students walking by and customers, and that would be a situation to deal with. But the question I wanted to ask tonight was about, in light of the fires, has there been any discussion of an emergency alert system, like a NICSIL?
The county has, the county has an emergency alert system that you can sign up when you can be, we also have on our town website notifications that you can get either an email or a text.
I got the emails, but when there's a fire down the block for me?
Yes.
I kinda wanna know, or if there's a lockdown at the school, I don't wanna be driving on the roads.
Yes.
Can we look into something like that?
We can, I would, I would say when you sign up for your notifications, let's see if we can do an emergency, the county has that, but the county may not be the, you know, aware of like the situation that you were referring to.
Like, we should, I think the town should have one.
Yeah, we, we probably should have sent something out at that point, we were trying to figure out where the heck it was quite time, because it was a...
Sure, I understand, but here we are, and it gives...
We are, so that's a good, yeah, that's a good...
A personal reason to think about these things.
Yeah, 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 that's a really good point, so, one, let's sign up for notifications by text, because we offer that as well.
Okay.
And two, let's make sure that we're on the emergency alerts 24/7.
Because, I mean, what is the procedure? If that fire had exploded and people needed to be evacuated, how are we supposed to know?
Emergency, emergency management, typically those kind of notifications come from the county, but we can provide the tech service that you're referring to, just make sure you sign up, and I'll, I'll work with our staff here, notifications, to make sure we can get you something like that, as best as we can. We do, we do our best to try and use that, that system, we do our best to use social media as well, when we can to let folks know.
I know the town's use NICSIL, like Pixel with an N.
Yeah, and I, I will say, in, in this case, the, the fire companies and, and emergency responders and police are also pretty good about notifying through social media as well, but to your point...
Knock on your door.
To your, no, but to your point...
How many doors can they knock on, how fast can they do that?
Depends on how imminent.
No, to your point, yeah, absolutely, we should make sure...
I've thought about this before, but...
We should make sure that that's being done, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Well, I was thinking along those lines, we, so we had, maybe still have a emergency for disaster preparedness committee that we had taught, I think that was back in January.
This would not qualify as a disaster?
No, but... No, but, no, obviously not, but, but we had talked about reframing that committee as a resilience committee. And I think this might fall under that, making sure that we have clear information systems in place.
The system would be the same, pretty good, notifying about disaster, you would notify about
And other communities who think a lot about flooding are talking about these same questions of how do we communicate in advance of a situation that people need to be aware of, how do we communicate in the moment of the situation? I think there are questions of that kind of
Yeah, just to send out a reminder that people can be notified by text, like now?
Oh, well, I do. Believe me, I do. Almost every, every letter I send out or newsletter says to, you know, to find out, log on to. But yes, to your point, I'll make sure that if there's anything like that, that it goes out via text as best as we can, you know, we do, because we're not always, not all of us have access to that system 24/7.
Yeah.
As best as we can.
Yeah, no, I get it, I'm just
Yeah.
I'm setting a general statement, this is a scary time we're in. I didn't see any rain in the forecast for the next week, and oh my God.
Yeah, no, and, and, and I failed to mention, I apologize, that the governor extended the burn ban statewide through November 30th.
Yeah.
So essentially the rest of the month, there's a complete outdoor burn ban. And, yeah, it is, it is scary.
Yeah, okay, thanks for all you do.
Thank you very much. Okay. Folks, thanks again. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a real estate matter under negotiation, public disclosure of which could materially affect. And I assume move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.